I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The move that we accept the consent agenda is presented.
A second call?
No, I'm in favor.
The next board selectmen meeting will be Monday, August 12th at 5:30 at the West Bath Town Office. I also want to announce that there is a hearing on a standard lease, August 20th, 2019. That will be at 6 o'clock at the West Bath School Gym.
That's a standard aquaculture lease.
Yes, yes.
Shellfish.
Yes. It's for an oyster fund. Any other comments here at all? Public comment, and dear the fact that we have a very long agenda, I would like to have each of you take comments if you have them, do no more than five minutes. Public comment?
I have some.
Yes, please identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Doug Lashley, I live at the end of Mountain Road and purchased seven years ago the Berry residence, the old Newmania Club from 1902 to 1948. And take a lot of pride in that property. And I expressed to the town administrator a growing concern with what appears to be a proliferation of a lot of properties that literally look like junk yards in the front yard. And, you know, I'm only a six-month resident of Maine, so I don't have a lot of standing to complain. But if this town, I mean, I drove around all over Brunswick, I drove around all over Bath, and I don't see anywhere the likes of what I see some places on Hill Road, Mountain Road, Foster Point Road. And I think some of them constitute health houses. I think it encourages others to do the same and perhaps even expand. There's a new pile of junk stored in a pile, looks like it's going to be a fire pile, on an empty lot on Hill Road. And it's growing. It started in May. And I think it's incumbent upon the selectmen to take a look at your ordinances, take a look at your policies. I think you should as a matter of public policy, even if it's not in the ordinances or the rules of governance over here, to encourage pride and ownership. And because eventually what's going to happen is you're going to have appraisals that are impacted by this condition. You're going to have property values go down, your tax base is going to go down, and eventually the real estate community is going to wake up and not going to recommend that people buy here. And I just ask that you undertake to do something to study it. I know you have a new code enforcement officer. Again, I haven't taken the time to take a look at what the codes, what the code says, but it's gotten worse even since May of this year. Thank you for that, considering that doing.
My name is Tim Kibstra, 25 Mountain Road. I live right next door to one of these dumps. I've seen it growing over the years, it's just getting out of control. People won't see the backyard either. I mean, we see mattresses, furniture. My wife just saw a couch thrown out the other day. If a dog drive by, you see the, you know, I guess towels for curtains. I don't care what people do inside the lawn, but I tell you what, this place, I can't imagine what's inside it, let alone outside it. I mean, you drive right by, you drive right by every day. My wife and myself from West Bath Market to our house on 25 Mountain Road count seven of these places between that spot and our house. You know, we don't have a big mansion, but what we have, we take care of. And most of people in our neighborhood take care of it.
I guess I'll pile on. Mike Montgomery of Rosedale Road and Brookside Drive. We've discussed this all before. You're aware of all these properties that they're talking about, particularly here on Hill Road and actually Foster's Point Road as you drive to the town hall. I would dedo everything they said, I would second everything they said. However, if you need help in fixing it, I would be glad to help you in any way that you might need help.
I would say same thing. I'm just looking, again, you know, our property, we try to keep it up, try to keep the value to it, but there's health risks associated with what I'm seeing next door.
I'll add one more thing. I'm, if the issue is cost in dealing with legal counsel, I'll volunteer to pay the cost. I'll go to Portland, I'll meet with your counsel, I'll sit down, I'll talk with him, and we'll figure out a remedy, and they can come back to you with a remedy. I know your resources are not unlimited, and I know enforcing things like this is controversial and complicated, but you just can't turn your head to it anymore.
The first thing that's needed is a specific complaint about a specific property, and then what the town is allowed to do legally according to the statutes of the state of Maine are fairly limited, so...
You've never received complaints about this before?
So what we need currently is a written complaint about a specific property.
I personally been down and talked to Ellis Reed twice. I've talked to John Dean recently. Come down and talk to him personally, and he seems like he's taking his job serious, or whatever. He called me last Thursday, told me about this meeting. So I have talked to people here in the town about this.
I think the first thing we need is a written complaint.
Can it be general?
It really has to be pointed toward a specific property.
If you look at, if you punch it in Google Maps, and you go to 23 Mountain Road, or my house, 25 Mountain Road, and you pop open, you're going to see, and this is an old picture. You're going to see junk in the back, you're going to see junk in the front. They had a kid out there last, I don't know what goes on, they had a kid out there with a weed whacker trying to get the front part of it down, three hours probably Friday night. The grass is high, I mean, really in a way, during the summer it's good, during the winter it's good, because you got snow and you can't see all the junk.
The first thing is we need a written complaint, and by next meeting we will have a compilation of all of the statutes that donate the rights and responsibilities of the municipalities, so that everybody will be on the same page about what we can ask of our neighbors or demand.
Who will address this complaint too? The town?
The town administrator. If you wish to address it to me, I can pass it on.
Do we have a health official?
Yes.
Rick Davis is our health officer.
Excuse me, what was his name?
Rick. Davis.
Rick Davis, okay.
If it's pointed, if you're sending the complaint to the health officer, it needs to cite a specific, what you believe to be a specific violation or health concern on the property.
Okay, cool with all the, whatever just out there, you know, that's been used once in probably five, six years, it's a frog pond, it's...
Make it as specific as possible.
Okay.
Okay, is there other comment on this? We need to move on to our regular business, but appreciate your concern, and we'll get specific information about the specific rights and responsibilities of municipalities by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Business item number one, investment committee, CD recommendations.
I'm thinking to put in regard, not to, I agree with you, so, well, is there any other subjects I can bring up?
Yep.
Concerning roads?
You've got five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. Mountain Road, there's a section along that, it's approximately just under .2 miles, where the paving has broken so badly.
Your name, sir?
Frederick John.
Thank you, that's just...
And I was wondering if in this, are you on a fiscal year or a calendar year with your budget?
We're on a fiscal year, starting July 1st.
Okay, I hope you can find in your road maintenance some money to make the repairs to less than .2 miles on Mountain Road, so it isn't such a car destroyer.
Have you discussed this with the road commissioner?
I don't even know who the road commissioner is.
He's right here.
You? Okay dude, there you go.
Well, dude, there is, we have money in a budget to fix that spot, I know what you're talking about.
Good.
And we do have it in our budget, and we actually was awarded the money for it, so it is going to happen.
Thanks, pal.
And you, hopefully call me anytime on it to see what, you know, if you don't see it happening, call me, and I'll tell you what's, what the problem is.
All right, second item, Comsat. Comsat, an Infinity?
Xfinity? Cable company?
Is there a change coming up on who does what to whom?
Not aware of any.
There's a strong rumor on the waterfront that Comsat is passing the baton to Infinity.
It's Xfinity and it's Comcast, and if the cable companies tend to sell to each other and consolidate often, that we have a contract with whoever it may be, whoever actually provides the cable, and that contract will remain in place no matter who owns it.
Okay, because Comsat made a commitment to extend their cable service, the first-class cable service, not the telegraph key type. All the way down Mountain Road to the end and up to Harbor Ridge. And they haven't done it yet, so let's not let them skate away from this, but we'll be using the telegraph key for the rest of our life.
Christine, could you check with them?
I will.
Processed. Thank you.
All right, I'm off my box.
Okay, thank you. Do we have painting bids?
Investment committee recommendation.
I was, I was hoping you'd done that, I'm sorry.
All right. Get folks up the tape. We have, we had a note, or a CD I should say, the Wells Park of the matured last Friday, $100,000. We have another one with Sanford Institution for Savings here in Maine that's maturing this Friday for $100,000. Typically, we invest only when they matured and it's rolled, so the money from last Friday is in the account, the money market account can be invested at any time. The one on Friday, our trust officer Jim said that he can actually purchase it this week based on what we've got before, because our consideration is that the Fed's going to make some radical changes here, we're going to lose points. So our recommendation is to place both $100,000 blocks this week, because normally we would have waited for it fully mature on Friday, that we would have met, and then give recommendation which won't be till August 12th. However, before August 12th, we're going to lose anywhere from 25 to 50 basis points, which is a lot, I mean, so our recommendation is to place both of them. One will be bought officially tomorrow, the other one will be bought but dated for Friday. So we're making a recommendation for 200,000, two $100,000 blocks. We've given, we're going to give you three recommendations for, and we're going to do the three recommendations. So our recommendations are, the first one is BMO Harris Bank, which is out of Chicago, its parent is Bank of Montreal, so it's, you know, small banks and Canadian banks tend to be conservative. It's 2%. Our second choice is Zion's Bancorp, a national bank, and that's on Salt Lake, another large bank. You know, we've tried two in the past, tried to pick some regional banks, but there's nobody there right now, and that's 1.95%. Our third choice is a state bank, Pioneer Bank in Austin, Texas, fairly strong bank, but regional. It would be for us like a Norway Savings Bank or somebody like that, and that's 1.95%. The banks that we've done in the past, some of the local ones just don't have anything for one year. Just to note, the first choice is a 13-month note, the other two are one-year, 12-month CDs. But the interest rate quote is still for a 12-month period, or the...
It's, the 2% is for the 13 months.
For the 13 months.
The other ones, so, you know, so we're looking, you know, some of the, to give you an idea, the CDs we bought that are coming due, like in January, we have $150,000 block, and that was 2.55 CD, and the rates have been coming down. And the next one was with a bank in Cambridge, Mass, that was $100,000, and that was 2.45. And the last one we did with, again, local, with the Canic Savings Bank in Auburn was 2.3. So you can see the, the interest rate's coming down, and the Feds are getting squirrely as we were talking about, and some of the others, and the rates are going to drop quite a bit. So this kind of on strategy makes sense, because it would give us $200,000 a year from now, which makes sense if that is the time period we have to put substantial cash down in the fire truck, we would be liquid. The other thing, as I said, we have two other notes that are due in January. So in January, we've got, quarter of the, $250,000. So again, depending on how things go with purchase of fire truck, we have liquidity in January, if not, we could invest that money for when we need it, because we'll have a much better picture of what the need's going to be for this fire truck purchase, which is the next potential big purchase. Or again, we could just roll it, shorter term, whatever, for the fire truck, six months, nine months, a year, whatever the delivery date, final payment is going to, and then the same thing a year from now. We'll have this $200,000 to be liquid, and we can just short-term invest it to cover the truck or not. So that's why we're saying we'll go 13 months potentially, or we one-year with these recommendations, so that we'll have cash when we need it, or we can do a short-term roll, whatever. We looked at going with money market, and last week the money market account was 2.3, 2.2, and it's already changing. And we're looking by next week, it's going to be two or under. So we said we might as well lock into CDs that the numbers were at.
What, our, Jim McLeod, the investment advisor that works with us on this, said that the CDs are already reflecting what's expected on the change of interest rates by the Fed, the dropping of interest rates. And he said it's, his firm's estimate is 90% that it's coming down, at least a quarter, maybe more, on, by the 31st of July.
What is the Fed trying to accomplish, to stimulate borrowing? Is that what it is?
They're, I don't know.
Well, they're trying, I think they're trying to, because the bond market's starting to show signs for recession, they're starting to show the classic symptoms of a recession's coming. So the Feds start to react already.
I mean, last I heard, everybody in Washington was patting themselves on the dash because the economy's on fire, you know?
It depends on who you're listening to for where and what. And the bond market's starting to look recession, or some long-term analysts, that's what they look at, whether it is or it isn't, but it's starting to act that way, so the CD market's starting to act that way, and the Fed's starting to act that way. And the Feds have the trump, they're, they're the ones that call. Once they call it, everyone starts following suit. What's, what's your recommendation, Joe? So our recommendation is, we have, we passed, those are our three picks. So we're saying buy two CDs, each of $100,000, and go with the first pick if possible, BMO Harris Bank, which is in Chicago, its parent is Bank of Montreal.
For the first one?
No, for both.
Oh, for both.
For both. There'll be two of them with a, if we can't, then go Zion is the second. Third choice is Pioneer Bank, State Bank in Austin, Texas.
And again, the reason we're giving you multiple choices, when, when they call tomorrow morning to place the order, it's possible...
And that's what happened last time. Last time I gave you choices, and the first one wasn't available, the next morning, so I had to go with the second choice.
This one, our first choice, was available this morning, but it may not be tomorrow morning.
Yeah, because the note, the list that we got Friday, Paul and I were looking at, and Paul gave a recommendation, and it disappeared over the weekend. It was pulled. I don't think it sold out, it was just a pull, because they looked at the interest rate and said, no, favorite, but that's going to do it, because that one was, it was closer to what we did give you, like 2.4 to 2.45, and so they dumped it, they pulled it off the market over the weekends.
Because the BMO Harris, 13 months, as a comparison adjusted to a 12-month period, my calculation shows a yield of 1.848%, is that correct?
On a 12-month? I want to figure it out. But we go more than just the interest, you know, we go by a strength to build a real strong bid.
Well, I would move that we go with the committee's recommendation and purchase both CDs from the BMO, the choice number one, BMO Harris. First, second choices, yeah, and the second choice would be the one in the court. Right.
I didn't hear what you said. Oh, we have to instruct the treasurer to make the...
He has to make the placement.
To make a placement. Okay, all in favor of making, following the recommendations and instructing the treasurer to do the same.
Thank you, Julie. Question, you're putting money aside for a new fire truck. That's good. What becomes of the old fire truck?
As has been discussed at a number of town infonational meetings, the old fire truck will be sold.
Oh, good. So that's to take into account when you're going with your budget.
Absolutely.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, now, business item two. Do we have any exterior painting bids?
We have one painting bid from Maine Highlands Contracting, they're out of Edna.
Edna.
Edna, wow.
All right. Well, that sounds reasonable.
And the proposed completion date is August 31st.
It's up to you guys, I don't think it's a viable...
Will we, once we put a bid out like that, we will want to...
I, I don't think that it makes sense for us to put the same bid package back in. We could certainly deal with the rot this year and leave the painting or some other option.
Edna's an hour and a half drive from here.
Yeah, it's up by Newport, I think.
Yeah, it's 10-hour drive, no, the cost is ridiculous.
Oh, I'm getting a bid from Connecticut.
Just painted?
Yeah, and deal with the rot.
$28,000 to do the trim on this building, but let it fall off first.
Really, it's just kind of like, right now, I know roofers in the state of Maine are booking for November of next year. Painters are about the same, general contractors. My contractors are now working from Machias to Portsmouth, and they're booked solid for a year. There's not enough tradesmen to go around for the amount of work everyone's trying to do right now.
Right.
I think reasonable for, what we put out there is anywhere between $8,000 and $12,000 and nothing more than that. I mean, they're only going to be here a few days, if that.
Are there any bids to paint western side of my house? Oh, I hadn't thought of that, yeah.
$28,000, Jesus, I could tire of it.
Yes, Mr. Hennessy.
You could pull a Pittsburgh, but you have the prisoners do what I've done, I believe.
Could you check, see if there's anybody from the county correctional system that might be...
Oh, we could certainly do that. We just talked about having them do the inside, we didn't talk about doing the outside.
Let's talk about that.
How can we paint something that needs to be replaced?
Yeah, that's a sleeper.
Paint it quick.
I think you need to... I would recommend that we take some time and really think about what we want.
Right. I think you need to get the first issue taken care of, your trim, and then worry about your paint when you have that job done. You can't hire a painter before you get your new trim work done.
So in that case, is it appropriate for us to inform the bidder that the bid was not accepted?
Yes, we need a formal motion on that.
I'm making a motion that when you check the bid from...
The other one?
Maine Highlands Contracting. Give a second of that?
Yeah, second.
All in favor of rejecting the bid? Third item, they...
And they spoke a while back, the sheriff's department, would be interested in heading both inside and outside.
Okay, let's see if we can get...
Who covers the liability for that?
County.
County.
It does? So it follows off a lot of the old annual service.
And the interest is going to be both those jobs.
In a word, we do, through our payments to the county. Either way. Either way. Town hall cleaning bids, did we receive any?
We received one bid from Mrs. O's LLC, that's Elizabeth Ostergaard, in the amount of $4,800, that's for the term through June 30th, 2020.
That's a little higher than we had budgeted, or have you not budgeted? That was, we were going to cover that for some...
Right, through cleaning way, yeah.
Can you break that down into...
I don't have a calculator.
4,800, what do you want, what do you want to do with it?
Divided by 52.
52? Oh, I really got my business on? Oh, you got a calculator? Yeah, how much?
It's actually 48 weeks.
So forty by forty?
Oh, wow.
Well, let me see.
Well, that's a hundred bucks a week, it's seventy-eight weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, that gives us forty-eight weeks.
That's about, just shy of the month for the, that's not bad. I'm gonna break it down whatever. It's quite reasonable for what people are asking.
How many square feet? I said, how many square feet is that? This is fantasy.
These square feet is gonna be-
I think, uh, property manager, one-on-one, how many square feet, how many, how many bucks per square foot are you paying?
This is very detailed for a-
Three.
Six hundred.
Six hundred.
How many?
Six hundred.
Six hundred what?
Square feet.
The building?
The room, at least.
So, like, twenty-four times.
That's gonna be sixteen, seventeen, one square feet.
I know most cleaners get twenty-five, thirty by side, I think it's very reasonable. About thirty bucks an hour anyway, yeah. If she's in town. Yeah, that's, that's helpful. Then the next question is creative financing.
Yeah, we deal with that, we'll worry about that. We have contingency.
Do we want to accept the bid? I'd make a motion that we accept the bid of forty-eight hundred from Mrs. O's LLC. For, is that one year, August first, June thirtieth? It's not quite one year, is it? It's from August first to June thirtieth of the current term.
So you know.
All in favor of accepting the bid? Okay, excellent. Next on the agenda, uh, winter sand bid request. So, is this in any way different from the bids that we have?
No, it's really not. Um, delivery is within the same time period and for the same amount of product.
What's the amount?
Um-
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Cubic yards.
Yeah.
And this is sand, put in all salt.
Correct.
How is it written up? Was it written up, so that they mix this out and stock out also? Or is that just the sand delivered to the salt?
No, this is just a way-
Just delivered to outside the salt?
Do you want to see that?
Yes. We're supposed to coordinate it with D O Steve.
Uh-huh.
It's supposed to be coordinated with you.
Will we make sure local contractors are aware of this?
Yes, yeah, we certainly can, I've already had one call.
The only, the only issue I see about this, then we gotta turn around, hire somebody to mix it and stock. So, if we could've got all that in on one bid, we're just eating that more time and more process when you're gonna have somebody mix it, stockpile it, and put it together.
I think that's actually part of the, um, snow removal contract.
It's not.
It's not in there?
It's not, and then we're gonna pay them more money to stockpile that shit.
Because they won the bid for the sand.
Right, because they won the bid.
Oh, that's why.
And in their bid, they offered to mix it.
Right. So they had the bid for both last year?
They were the only bidder, right?
They did the plowing and they did the sand.
They got it and-
So it makes sense to combine it?
Huh?
In that case, it, it makes sense to combine it? I mean, it makes sense to maybe work at, doing the whole process in one?
Right, but who's to determine the mixture? That's always been, that's always been an issue in the past, you know? You know, to blend that, you know, how much salt with the sand, and then we get into all this, all these hot loads and so on and so forth, you know? It's kind of a snowball thing.
It should be, um, according to the current recommendations of MDOT for this area.
Right, that, if you have, say, you hired me to go over and, and mix the sand, right? The next contractor that comes in to lay the sand, they're like, wow, that's, that's not two hundred pounds. Pretty hard, or three hundred pounds, whatever the MDO spec is, so, like, okay, well, here's another, you know, twenty thousand dollars worth of salt to achieve your goal.
Well, it won't, it won't happen that way. It's, well, fifteen hundred yards of sand, we'll figure the two hundred pounds, so fifteen hundred of the salt we're dealing with.
I saw, I saw, I heard that you asked for hot salt.
Yep.
That, that is not the, the one's salt.
You want salt?
Yes, we don't put the salt out too bad. The salt, the salt is, is from Morton.
The, the town with the-
Salt comes, I understand here that you don't want salt on your roads.
No, with sand, salt's not included in this bid.
The salt isn't included in the bid.
Okay, sorry, I got a new battery.
There is salt. Use salt.
I'm sorry, there is a bunch of calls coming in, packing, there's a lot going on tonight.
It does make sense that it's included in one of the contracts. Who makes this? So if it's not in the winter-
Next year it's always.
Yeah.
If you get it right, whoever gives the, the bid for part of the town roads and stuff has to mix up the sand and salt that the town finishes. And then that will be-
So what do you mean, we get it right for next year? You mean, you get it right for this contract, or are we waiting another year?
We already have his last years this year.
Oh, I see.
We're on the last year of the contract. Um, gotcha. So, um, do we want to specify in the contract that the, the sand bidder mixes?
Sure.
Does that make sense? How works for me? Absolutely, because we have to clear on who got it for that.
Yeah. Do, do we wanna do more than fifteen hundred yards though? Because if you do fifteen hundred yards, you only need another seven hundred yards. If I'm a contractor, I'm gonna charge a, a lot more money per yard if I'm hauling seven hundred yards opposed to fifteen hundred yards. Why don't we go through twenty-three hundred dollars?
How much is up there now?
Well, that's just that, we're gonna, we're gonna need to calculate, push it up into the pound and count like what we think we have there now, because we, I think, last I looked, I thought they're like four hundred yards in there.
Oh, was that, okay.
So.
That's why we don't put the salt in.
Right, well, it was supposedly that we'd keep buying, when we, me and Adam first discussed this, it was supposed to be twenty-five hundred yards put in there. And then we'd buy two thousand yards every year until, and then that was there, one, eventually, sooner or later, if we have a thousand yards, it's all left over.
Yeah, that's kind of what I remember too, I don't know where fifteen hundred came from.
In this package, we ought to have some sort of, um, you know, quantity, because I know we had an issue with that last year on, you know, they just sent an invoice for, you know what I'm saying?
Been invoiced as well.
Yeah, we should have some type of quantity so they can submit to the town, so we know exactly what, what we have for yardage, so Steve can correlate between that.
Sort of like their usage report or something like that?
Yeah.
We made uses, but not only that, the people that are delivering it, um, we just, they just handed us the bills and said, they'll give you fifteen hundred yards. Well, we never had a truck slip or nothing. So we had no idea if we got fifteen hundred yards or two thousand yards of all the upper side.
Um, so, we want, we want the, um, purchase and sale agreement to specify, do you want two thousand yards?
I think we're better off with two thousand yards, it was the original plan.
Yeah, yeah, two thousand yards, and who will give the bid, mixes the salt and sand for us, we will supply the salt.
You want to see your truck slips?
Yeah, yes.
Put that in.
And that-
We wanna have proof of delivery.
If they buy it from Crocker or whoever they buy it for, their own pit, they should have a truck slip. We want a truck slip when it's delivered, from where it came from. That we're there, if we have a doubt that the sand is not coarse enough or something, we have a truck slip and we can go check it out and then, you know, either we can accept it or not accept it.
Well, you probably want a gradation on it anyway, especially if you get two thousand yards.
There should be a gradation on that, isn't there?
There is, the gradation is there.
Yeah.
So they need to have that with their cemental package.
Yeah.
Okay, any, you have any other recommendations for?
Nope, I, I-
Yeah, I'm, this is just a side. I was, I was up there last year. And, uh, fifteen hundred, initial fifteen hundred had been delivered and the salt had been delivered.
Well, if you, if you need one.
Mike, you're gonna interfere with the-
I'm not sure.
You're gonna interfere with the recording, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I was up there last year, uh, fifteen hundred cubic yards had been delivered and the salt had been delivered, hadn't been mixed yet.
Right.
And, um, I'm wondering if we ordered two thousand cubic yards with a respective increase in the, um, salt, are we gonna have room enough up there?
Yes, sure.
We are?
Doesn't take a lot of salt. Makes what I'm saying, to make it effective.
Okay.
It's, it's deceiving, but.
Yeah, I, I would go on the lower side of the deal to you, wouldn't you mix that? Because you have the salt there now, the town has, uh, given them for use. That if they need a hot roll, they can make it. So, it's gonna be there, they seem to make the everything hot anyways, so, there's no sense of pounding the salt, saying they took the bags.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure the state used to go a hundred and fifty. They started off at seventy-five.
Yeah, they, they bumped it recently.
And then they went up to a hundred and fifty with this sand. Well, seventy-five pounds will keep it from freezing, that's all they care about back there.
Right.
So now, we're trying to get the salt and water into the sand.
Paint roads as soon as possible. Okay, so, we have a couple of amendments that we've added. That we will have specifications that, that the sand, that the bidder will mix and will provide a truck slip. And that we are lending the- the amount to two thousand cubic yards. For those shall be accepted.
Yeah.
Are we accepting that? We'll kick, all in favor?
All right, I have the notes, I'll make a change this.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Ah, business item number five, Mr. Road Commissioner, it is your turn.
Well, I have been doing a lot of homework for the town, and everything costs a lot of money.
Of course.
So, I'll get up to start off with the money that we, I said that we would like to have for the, I got Crocker, it was nice enough to come out and drive the roads with me, and he gave me some prices on what it would cost to do the Foster Point Road from the end to the Hill Road. And it was too much money. So we tried to figure out other ways we could do it. And the biggest thing is, we need some shimming on that road, because our road right now is probably a foot, eight inches lower than that side of the road, still through there, what's pushed in so much. Which, I even asked what he thought caused this road to sink so bad like this. And he kinda agreed that a, well, a truck with the bigger sand that goes into the body and the weight of it in the springtime, when the frost and stuff comes out, and using some of that salt, that the roads don't quite freeze like they normally do. So we're gonna have to, uh, get a smaller truck on that road in spring then. We stopped a little delay for us, we've got the, uh, the contract it is, we can't be putting these big, heavy trucks out on our roads. Can't take it. Not in spring.
So we, we had planned to have, um, meeting with the, with a power contractor?
Yeah, well, I'm just, that's just another thing I'm trying to bring up for the next time there's a contract. I mean, no, we can't tell him what to use now, because he'd already bid it on the job.
Right, so we can, we can request.
I think essentially that truck is plenty for our roads from the down. We stopped putting this bigger, heavier stuff up on it, that's just running our roads. Um, as you could see, it was over two, two thousand ton to do that, the road, or about twenty-eight hundred ton. So I asked him if he could go and just do a good shimming all the way up through there. Basically, that's gonna cover the whole road, it's gonna shim, but I told him I wanted at least three quarters of an inch in the center. So we could use that, and then you're gonna overlay the following here. Because you see the price that he'll do the good, the shim for a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. That's all the way from the end to the hill road. And he's gonna grind the center line on, um, the Foster Point Road, where you're going down by Old Man's King's, uh, travises. The road's starting to dip down and go, so you gotta grind down through the center line, and run from the center line over and shim that back up. That's included in that quote.
So that, the shim is one quote for the hundred and twenty-seven sixty-six?
Yes.
And then it doubles if we have a kick?
If we have it overlaid. I asked him, and he thought if we did the shim the way that we decided, all the way across and, and don't have the screed cut down in the middle of it, so that they don't bind, have a good three quarters of an inch there, it could go us a couple, three years before we had to overlay. We'd have to watch it. So it's gonna need getting away. This is just, this is, this is the one of the process of getting it shimmied out. Unless we can come up with the two, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, whatever it is, to have it done.
But, but this could go the other way as well. You, you have a good chance of failure, um, you know, because it's not, it's not perfect. I mean, we've seen it in the past as well, it's not flaking.
But, yes, that's why we also discussed the three-quarter inches to the center. Because what happens when usually fails is when they run their screed down and the rocks don't get, ain't enough there to pack it.
Yeah.
So he's gonna run that three-quarter all the way across, so we're probably gonna have, the problem is, we're gonna have probably four or five inches in one spot of it.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna make sure we get our three-quarter in the center. Well, it's pretty hard to fail, it's gonna look like it's been outplayed.
Yeah.
So it's, it's just not gonna-
Uh, what, how much of this was accounted for in the budget that we just passed?
I think about one forty-four in the budget for Foster Point. Mm-hmm. So, but if we had to delay other roads, we can shift the money around? Because I think there's some ditching that needs-
Well, yes, there is other projects of the road. There's places that I went down through there and, and really need some ditching. There's one guy that's been calling about if his cowlit changed, I went down and looked at it. Well, this cowlit's about three inches up out of his driveway. Plugged it both ends, there was no ditch on either end of it. So, it's basically a stretch of about three hundred feet that needs to be ditched with the cowlit going in there.
On which road?
This is on the Foster Point Road. This is something that's gonna be addressed before we go down there, put any pavement, anything up. And we also have a few areas there, we got like two cowlits that needs to be changed. And after this gets all shimmied up where it's supposed to be, we're probably gonna take quite a bit of shoulder work for us getting it built up so it's not a drop off. So I'm thinking you're looking at probably another four, forty thousand, while I put it off the bid, to have the road shimmied up after and get this ditched before we put up. Steve, are these cowlits we changed seven, ten years ago? We changed a whole bunch of cowlits, so. Ones we've, we just put on the hill road, the steel cowlit, that's next to the other one that, that we got changed, now we're gonna- But these weren't changed? These have not been done since, still steel. Anytime you see a steel cowlit, it's been a while. So, he's just, and it's very easy, without no data or anything else, we don't know where that cowlits are. Oh, I know that. We're gonna try to get a, play out. I'm just asking if you've changed these? No, these haven't been changed. The same way they thought maybe on the hill road, the guy was calling, and they thought maybe that it might've washed out underneath that cowlit, but what, what happened is it's two twenty-four inch cowlits on the hill road there. The bottom hill? The bottom hill, and the plastic one is in good shape, that they, I think they changed it like twelve years ago. That's in excellent shape, and, but there's a twenty-four inch steel one there at the bottom, brought it down on, and now it's tiny one beside it, and the road's caving down, and I don't know if you know it, so.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Dramatic.
Excuse me?
It's dramatic.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be installing wider cowlit. No, we're gonna be installing a new twenty- Nope, we're gonna be installing a new twenty-four inch culvert beside the other new, well, twelve-year-old plastic twenty-four inch culvert. You really need two culverts in it because for the last couple of weeks I have been chasing the little beavers around and we have a serious beaver problem in the town. So I had a, I hired a guy out of, was Cassett, to come over and cut these beavers, a beaver specialist. The Warden Service gave us, gave me the same. And so he started traveling up and down the Brooks and right here on the Bull Rock Road, this guy is even going in the culverts and dragging out the branches and stuff. I mean, he's doing a real good job, but now there's a big dam up by my old house across here and there's a lot of water backed up. If I took that dam out, which he wants me to because they know the beavers got, it's too easy for them to work because it's on the water. But they can plug it right back up. So if I let that go now and Doug goes with Mike out and hits the hill road, we probably didn't have much of it left there. Where it's already eroded, it's gonna make a mess. And that does gotta get let go out there.
Have they trapped any beavers?
Yep. He's got one fifty tons, that was good decent.
That's food for thought. How many beavers does he suspect we have to?
He, he's, there's only adult beavers, males that build dams.
How many do you think we gotta deal with?
I don't know, he already got four. But it's not that, that's just here.
Yeah.
Now you go down to Saviano Road. There was four dams on the Saviano Road I took out. The one that goes across, and I don't, I haven't seen that lady as a show who lives in that nice place that's up there, but that culvert is washed right out. Whether beavers dibbed it up, we had it go.
Is that why it doesn't stand?
Yes, that's on that road, it's not on our road, so that one's getting washed up beside there.
Perhaps we need to put beavers on the next agenda, but we need to get back to Foster's point.
Okay.
So I'm understanding that you wanna shim it this year and in theory pave it next year.
Overlay it, yes.
Yeah. And you're thinking it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand to shim it this year and Foster's Point?
That's what you quoted us.
Okay, Foster's Point Road has a allocated budget this year of a hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yeah, now that's seventy-seven dollars a ton.
What you're saying is an extra forty thousand dollars plus three culverts to go with that one twenty-seven?
Nope, I'm guessing, I don't know what I've been doing, we're gonna put a bid package out and set it out for bid. This is why I'm bringing this to you now, so we can send the guys in the town and other people around and put it out for bid.
So it's one twenty-seven plus?
Plus.
Okay.
I'm thinking it's gonna cost more forty dollars to shim that up and shake, do some ditching and.
Forty thousand?
Yeah.
So that's one sixty-seven thousand.
That's gonna make it one seventy.
That's easier than it will.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna get repainted out there.
Yeah, no, well, that's.
So we have a hundred and forty-four dedicated for Foster Point Road and we're looking for.
We also have some other money left over from last year that we can put in towards the Foster Point Road.
Okay.
That we didn't get to work on.
How much, how much is that?
I'm not sure, you have any idea?
I don't have the numbers with me.
Okay, so we're about, we're about, so twenty-six thousand short budget-wise, the way it works.
But if you look at our budget, I wouldn't say we're that much short because I have, I believe, twenty thousand dollars or so in there for some of this miscellaneous work.
We don't know for sure though.
I.
We need, we need to find twenty-six thousand somewhere.
Yeah, it, it would likely mean that you're gonna delay one of the roads that's on the list.
I thought we had some.
Some kind of work that's on the list.
I thought his budget this year was, there was some general road money in that budget.
There is some.
That we can use.
Well, it'll be too exciting because I got about three more in here if I'm not. Because I decided to ask you, yeah.
It's more exciting to talk about beavers, but let's stay on the test. So we're gonna do the work?
Well, I think we need to talk about the other two on here too before we.
Okay.
Because if we do have to cut, we're gonna have to determine.
So you've got Dan here, Kings Point. Hennessey Road is probably on the cross up list.
That's by the Kings Point Road too. If I live down there on the Kings Point Road, I'd barely be able to complain it every day. That road's a mess. You can't do over ten thousand an hour over it.
So you're highly recommending Kings Point?
So I had him go down there and look and have him clean some stuff up on that too.
So you would do all of this project? You don't wanna do half and half on this one, you want to do the whole thing?
On Kings Point?
Yeah.
That's just shim it through, yes. That's already.
You've got a surface pave of an inch, so you.
On Kings Point? He hasn't written down on that?
Yeah.
Right. Yep.
And was there any allocation in this year's budget for work on Kings Point Road?
I'll get my list.
Yeah, well, I thought it was a half of a deal, the sixteen thousand dollars we will go down through and shim it and let another sixteen thousand pave it, so for thirty-three thousand dollars we can have Kings Point Road down.
Great, we just have to figure out if we have the money or not.
Right, oh, we had what, three hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
For roads?
It was three fifty.
Three.
Total for roads.
So Bull Rock Road would look like no discussion then?
Um, there is discussion, but.
There is, okay. Oh, so there's more?
Yes, the, the job that done.
There's always more.
The job that done for the Bull Rock Road on the other end, um, it just needs to be striped. Maybe a little bit more shimmin' on the sides, but I, I believe that's gonna work, it's gonna work good. Um, the water's still running out from that bed and it's not running in the road no more, it's running out the side of neither road, so I think we got the project there very well.
That's all. So what's, what's the, what's this piece here? Five thousand five, a five thousand dollar job.
Okay, that, I asked him to come over and look at, we have a ice problem on top of the hill for the, where the bolt landing is. So I, Christina had Rob to meet me down there and do both of this.
Oh, this is the Shank?
This is, right now we're at the Bull Rock Road with the bullet and then that, it's a shot hole down there.
But this is, this does have anything to do with Shank's discussion on?
No.
No, okay.
This is not gonna do with Shank, this is not gonna do with the complaints we've been getting from the people down there on the Bull Rock Road with ice and everything, leave the road and make some mess in the way. So I had Rob and he said, you have it right off the back, he said, we really looks like it's all lead, we should design it the same way as we did the other end and probably go eighty thousand. We just can't do that, so I think we should spend the two thousand dollars, have it drilled and see what we have there. Have somebody come down with drill and drill down through there, see what the height is to ledge. Or we try fixing that with our own imagination, rip out that hill section, see what's there, see if we can get some underdrain in, maybe just take a little bit of dinking and stuff and skip that. Because it's, it's, the problem keeps seeming to be moving up. So I think if we rip that up, go in there and put some underdrain in that road, it might, you know, dig out a couple of spots, we can fix it without going in there blasting it all out, going down three feet and so on.
So.
I think we should try to give that spot a twenty thousand dollar fix than an eighty.
Where is the eighty?
What we have, what we have for your suggestion here is this, two and a half inches of base?
On what's that?
On the Bull Rock.
That's after it's all fixed. I just had Croker give me a quote.
Okay, okay, Croker's part.
Right, just to go in there and pave that spot that we have to fix.
But we're talking about reconstruction and.
There's gonna be reconstruction down there and we'll pave it, yes. We have so much water leaking up out of the road right there now, uh, winter time this treasure's all went on.
Nothing like ice on hill.
Right, okay. Well, basically what I was trying to say is Rob Cool, what thinks it's gonna cost, probably eighty grand to fix it and blast it all out.
So that's not in this year's budget?
No. I am trying to suggest, thinking that we could probably rip everything out, see what's there, mix, if it takes a little bit of hammering out some ledge and stuff to get the underdrains to work, we could probably get away for around twenty thousand plus Croker paid.
Twenty-five thousand?
But if we go getting engineered and everything, you're gonna be up around eighty thousand if this is gonna.
What, in the budget out for this year, is there anything for Bull Rock Road?
No, there's not, not specifically.
Okay, is there anything specifically for Kings Point Road?
No.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that you can't re-prioritize.
Right. I'm just trying to put a handle on how much we needed to re-prioritize.
So Rockweed Road you said was your number two priority?
Mm-hmm.
Is that still?
That's, that's, the Rockweed Road and stuff like that, they can, we can get out of it cheaper and make some temporary fix that will, temporary fix will go a long time on those roads.
Do not have to have it.
Right.
Foster's Point is extremely difficult to handle. Foster's Point is dire. It's, even I can tell Foster's Point is in trouble.
So with everything in your budget, this and what you have there, did you calculate the cost if you had to do everything?
No, I have not. I've been trying to wait till we got a program and make Christina can sit down and I really don't know what my budget is. And I feel ashamed to say that, but.
I think it would help us all.
My budget got so jerked around the last few years that I, I got lost on it and if I needed to do something, I'd ask him.
So to move things along, would, would it make sense for us to say approve the work, the go-ahead on Foster's Point and then take a look at these other things after you've had a chance to look at your budget?
I think that would be.
In detail and see what possibilities you have for switching out, changing priorities up?
Yes, and also I just wanted to say that you guys gave us the money to work with, that's a lot of work to do in the town and we can't progress today. We gotta save a long time, we need to get this done, so that's why I'm bringing it to you guys now, um, that we're trying to look forward to other things. We basically gotta figure out how high of money we wanna go to put this out for bid or can I just go hire somebody to do a part of this job and a part of the town? I mean, we gotta.
Short season.
Right, and I know you guys want to see the money going.
Does Croker have availability?
Croker is all set up, he said he'll jump right on it for us. Croker has been a big help, he comes and drives with us, he doesn't wanna lose our business, he give it to us, he's probably even our road cheaper than I can go buy it at his place for.
And we tried ten years ago jumping around between contractors, it didn't work. It was terrible, we tried Bull Rock and all that other stuff and just Croker, he treated us so well through the years, it's.
Yeah, that's what I keep hearing.
I mean, he's, they've been great.
And he, it really is, I mean, he explains things and, you know, you can't beat a guy of his own trade. They hire a guy just to go do his paving and stuff and, yeah, the stuff he speaks to me and it makes sense.
I think we've heard from tax payers that this is definitely their priority and if we wait too long, aren't we gonna be able to get somebody?
Let's, let's go ahead with Foster's Point Road and.
We have a question.
My question is, if we don't do the paving, the second coat on Foster's Point, what's chances that road will lasting, gonna be hurt during the next coming year?
See, I think the road's gonna be good, I really do. I'm gonna pay attention and I'm gonna push really hard coming spring next year and I'm gonna pay attention to how many trucks are going down there. You know what, I don't understand now and I don't know what's going on. And I sat there and just watched the full traffic one time and I bet ten oil trucks passed me and not one of them from the same company.
Not one of them what?
From the same company. I mean, they were just, there was like ten different trucks going down the Foster Point Road to deliver oil from ten different places.
So we, the road will be safe, you're not hurt by not doing the second paving this year?
Yes, that's, that was the goal, that's why we went, so heavy on the shim?
Yep.
You don't usually put a one-inch shim?
No. The state doesn't.
That's, no, I said, the state does a five-eighths, okay? Let's get it straight. Five-eighths of an inch, there's your hot dog.
If you're lucky.
All right.
But look at the last time we paved, look how long it's been, let's see. Let's see, fairly decent, you know. I think, you know, around, you could probably go, you know, five to six years, but safely, you know, you're going in exactly.
Exactly.
Because you start peeling and then you're gonna grind it.
Oh, yeah.
Because then you end up with a poll, a polling area with a new wave.
The biggest thing is Dave is most of the time people do shim spots, you'll see it down there and skip, and skip, okay? Well, somewhere where they blend that out, if they don't mill it seams, then it just peels and it's right side because it goes down nothing. He guarantees one inch where it doesn't even need to shim.
All right, Steve, we wanna move ahead here, we'd like to make a proposal, we wanna approve Foster's Point Road, the shim, one inch, the three culverts. And forty thousand is for what?
Misalainen, that's the shim I added.
To be done this year. And we want to approve the work that you requested for Kings Point also be done this year and that we have Croker do both of those roads.
If he's ready to go, let's, let's have him do it.
Well, I can have, I can have him get shimmied and stuff like that before, you know. Well, we got an overlay coming next year, I can have him go way down there and do it next week, but I don't, I want to get that one culvert and a ditch and put in.
Do we have to go through the bid process?
I think that we will, we potentially could lose the road if we go through the bid process because they may not be able to do it this year.
Bear an emergency and sidestep the bid process?
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense under these circumstances. I think the community would understand, we need to probably catch up.
So we go to the bid process, that'll be.
Months.
Yeah, it won't be till late fall before anybody can get one.
September is overlay, it's overlay season, it's cold.
Yeah, and quickly we jump on.
He will.
Do you have what she said?
Yes, about the big emergency situation?
Yes.
And the two, we wanted to hear?
The two proposals, yes.
Right.
Okay. And that's a motion, that's a motion.
And that's a second.
Yeah. And that's an all in favor. Okay.
Okay, the next question is the forty thousand, how, how do you wanna do that? Is that going out to bids?
No, we want to get these roads done.
We wanna get these two of them done.
This is no.
So if I can take that money and I ask them if he's, he's got some time, I can go hit them. That I can use my authority to get the rest of the work done.
Yes, so that we get it done this year.
Well, I try not to, everybody I came in and done it has the time, so there's nobody off and, and get it done the fastest way.
Then you may need to sit with Christine for the rest of your.
Right, and then.
Set the rest of your.
Yes.
Juggle, juggle the rest of them.
Good, that's a good choice.
Thank you.
The twenty thousand piece, what is that?
That miscellaneous includes colors and anything like that.
Last, but not least, we have an emergency job on the hill road. We need to replace a culvert. Mr. Wolf is nice enough to bring up a proposal, I have a proposal there.
Is this?
I have no idea what Jeremy's is, but I can get the job done within the next couple of days.
Shall we open the bid?
There's a hole in the road, you better open that.
We have to do the repairs on the Kings Point before we pay that, like the normal.
This is a bid for Reno's excavation, replace twenty-four inches, twenty-four inch culvert. Let's rust it out, this bid is for fifty-two hundred dollars.
This is for where?
At the bottom of Hill Road, just as you're going down.
Big fast rail, people don't let how it looks.
Twenty-four hundred?
Well, the barrel is.
Yeah, well, the barrel is.
Fifty-two hundred. And the other thing that's happening is that people go way around the barrel and they're still driving in the middle of the road when they go around the corner.
Right, so is this actually a different, well, if, if these bids are approved, I can do the work tomorrow.
Midcoast excavation, um.
Right, at your best.
Let's see, we have a total. Somebody with a calculator?
Fifty-one, seventy-five, plus five hundred, fifty-one, seventy-five.
Fifty-six, seventy-five.
Fifty-six, seventy-five.
And the other bid is fifty-two. What is your pleasure?
Fifty-two is the first one.
Yeah.
And fifty-six, seventy-five is the second one.
You have a motion?
I believe we have that at a thing for miscellaneous stuff that could happen, so. You have no choice.
Oh, you need to recuse yourself. Oh, yeah, it's up to us. County needs to recuse.
Oh, chill, it's a little bit.
Uh, Reno's excavation.
I move it over a little bit.
And we'll second that. Since we moved consecutive, we're in favor.
I think so.
Thanks for getting that in.
My pleasure, thanks for reading, if I've worried about.
Um, I'll be talking before Foster's point road.
Okay.
Some ditching discussion, I need to get that going, so.
There you go.
I'm gonna do this tomorrow, get it done, get it out of the way, I pushed the money off. Actually, I was supposed to, I went and did the magic off today. When they said it was emergency, I was gonna do it today, but I, I knew it was gonna be over five thousand dollars, I wanted to get at least another bid.
Yes, thank you for saying that.
And you're gonna look at the gentleman's front of Mount Road, the what now? The gentleman's front of the Mount Road? Yes, now we're planning on doing that, I got the money and I'm on it for shimming and all that.
So we're gonna make that culvert beaver safe?
We already had a problem with beavers there.
So why ask something because I've, I've told people this now, I know there's been town folks releasing beavers. What? So is there a law or any way that we can?
Releasing beavers?
Mm-hmm.
Like catching them in other places and bringing them here?
I've never heard of such a thing.
Why would they do that?
I haven't heard of that.
Okay, um, this is how what we're doing with our beavers now, if anybody wants, think they're gonna get offended, hold what beavers. I asked the warden and the warden says kill them. That's what's happening though. So they're now getting released, so nobody else is laying, no other place in town, no other town.
But I know how it happened. No, I'm just saying, is there any rules, regulations against?
You should talk to the warden.
We, we had the warden, I called the warden and that's what he said.
Yeah.
I said, what, what, how do you prefer, I guess what he said, this guy here, he's got my permission because he says we are overbundied with them, they're, they're really making messes of roads and I tell you, you could go down there one day, clean that out and if you don't get, the next day you go back and bug again.
That's why they say work like beavers?
Yeah, and then I, he tells me just male beavers, adult beavers only, that's not a big damn.
Well, that's gonna be out, the problem, I think, would come in, well, involve legal action, but you would have to catch someone in the act.
Right.
Maybe slip and shot or a board for video footage of anyone that's seen beavers.
Just give me some names, I'll take care of it.
Some ADC agents will relocate them, but the property owners actually request that beaver be relocated to their property. That's the only circumstances where I've seen beaver relocated.
And some are only part of the beaver witness protection.
I see the relocated four nine.
Only, only the state, a game warden or a licensed individual.
Animal damage control office.
Right, or a traveler, depends on their license, can move and release.
Can we post the ranks on the town website? So that we can, um, inform the public that if they live catch a beaver, they should contact not us and don't release them anywhere.
This is item six, tax required property, Angerski Moore Road and Rockweed Road, okay. I calculated the per diem for Angerski Moore Road for the tax years two thousand eleven through two thousand eighteen, which is, those are all of the tax years that we lost money for. Um, it comes to a total of fifteen thousand, three twenty-nine thirty-three.
So that, that's, that's what we would establish as our minimum bid?
Um.
Maybe, yeah.
Possibly. I would recommend that you add an administrative line onto that. It's interesting that Rockweed comes to almost the same amount for tax years two thousand fifteen through two thousand eighteen, it comes to a total of fifteen, six sixty-five, thirty-two.
Fifteen, six sixty-five, thirty-two.
Right. So if you wanna make it real easy and go with round figures, you could just say minimum bid sixteen or, you know, whatever your pleasure is. Or you can just add a set amount to each of these totals.
These properties?
Yeah, tax required parcels. So five hundred is a reasonable administrative fee.
Sixteen to a thousand.
Sixteen hundred for, for minimum bid doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
Sixteen thousand.
I mean, sixteen thousand, sixteen hundred would be unreasonable. I think sixteen thousand would make sense, I, I just round it off and save yourself the trouble of.
Doing the math.
Are they building lots up?
They have, the counties and they have facilities, they have buildings.
Not, not much of a building.
They're, they're not a great.
Don't sell your gouges just yet, they gotta put.
I'll give you thirty with a bitter right now.
We have to put this up to bids or.
How are you, how are you gonna do that on MMA or something or?
Um, Christine, what is the bid, bid process for our public?
We'll be notifying the bidders and we'll have it on our website and in the newspaper.
Okay.
So that will be soon, at least by next week.
Do we have a deadline on that? You say soon and then next week, are you talking next Friday?
Yeah, shoot, I don't have the.
How long, how long are we gonna give them to get the bids in?
It's not gonna be a day you go down there and just get on it?
No, no, it's gonna be written, mail-in bid, to be open.
They haven't got some one time, no?
So bids will be due August twenty-third.
Question, when's commitment?
I don't know yet. I was told that we would have to wait until after the audit's done, I'm not sure why.
Is the audit being done yet?
Not quite.
So if we.
He's supposed to show up this week.
So the commitment won't happen before this, this bid is decided?
Correct.
Okay, so it won't be.
It probably will not.
It won't be on the tax year, oh, we'll have a tax year, that's what I'm wondering about. If the commitment is done before these bids are done, then another tax year is happening, right?
Yeah, right. Yes, you're right. No, I thi, I expect commitment to probably be late again this year. Maybe not as late as last year, but it will probably be later on.
Act August twenty-third?
Probably.
Well, hesitant unless you wanna change your minimum bid.
So if you change it, you can't really put these the same, cause one of these has been seven years and the other one's only been.
No, I'm saying if you, if you worry about overlap and another tax year happening on those properties, you have to increase your minimum bid to allow for that.
Right.
Right, which is peanuts. I mean, you buy a piece of property, even if you had twenty thousand on you, it'd still be. We still need the number though.
Yeah, but you, I.
So if you take that fifteen, each one of the, the fifteen, six, six, five and divide it by three, that's what you'd wanna add to that one.
Well, it's already the end of July, so I'm pretty confident, I'm pretty confident that commitment isn't gonna happen.
We got four months before the next, for next year?
No, it just started, two weeks ago.
But no matter who owns it, it's taxed as a payment.
And whoever gets it's gonna only be a couple lines.
It's taxed, it's taxed, it's taxed in the prior year.
Right.
Well, but the Rockweed is still previous owner's name, we haven't.
What do you wanna go, minimum bid? I think you're fine. You're fine how you are.
I'm fine now.
Okay, so, um, we're going to put these up for bid for the minimum bid of sixteen thousand dollars.
Each?
Each, for each property.
Yep.
And is, is that our, is that our motion? You don't? The bids to go out be advertised by Friday, can we do that?
Hmm, I expect so.
And, um, due on August twenty-third?
Yep. Second.
On favor. Demos Road property update.
Okay. I spoke with council and was strongly encouraged to produce a joint notice of violation, which needs to be issued by the code enforcement officer to both the landowner and anyone we believe might have ownership rights in the trailer. The joint violation will be for both a junkyard and for a dangerous building. Uh, we have to go through a significant notification process, which includes attempting to notify Crocker and, um, Stover and anybody else who might have an interest in the property. Before we send the letter out, John and I will draft a letter and it will be reviewed by council. And the property owners will have a right to appeal to our zoning board of appeals if they're agreed by the situation. Uh, that's as much information that I have right now. But I was told it was gonna be quite a drawn-out process.
Yes, because we're dealing with private property.
Yeah, we're not even sure.
Whose private property it is.
Yeah, we don't know who the owner of the trailer is.
What's the property in question?
It's a trailer of.
Can, can we do that from the Grange Hall?
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Get rid of some girl, right?
Yeah.
Okay, have you and John have proceeded with that?
Yes.
I don't care about you.
To get punched in the road.
Yeah.
Uh, business item eight, revision LED project change order. We have approved seventy-two, five for the retrofit for the town office and the West Side School. And we have a change order dated July ninth. And Christine, you wanna talk about that, cause you know most?
Yeah, we're gonna be over budget or over our appropriation by six thousand and change, at least at this point in time. The total cost of our town office retrofit is eighty-nine hundred and twelve dollars. And the total cost of the school's retrofit is expected to be sixty-nine, seven oh five. We have a change order that revision is waiting for me to sign off on. So the first thing I need to know, is it okay for me to exceed our appropriation? And part two is where will the money come from?
This change order is, says is they've added dimming to multiple areas, which wasn't included in the first bid?
Correct.
Well, it went before.
David might have some information.
Went before the taxpayers, one way. So this change order, in my little mind, is gonna have to go before the taxpayers to be amended.
You?
Part of the problem was that you ended up numbers of town meeting and some of that cost is an increase, I believe, due to the tariffs in supplies and materials. The dimmers, uh, I would suspect and would think that the school would find money in their budget, their current budget, on building maintenance or whatever, to take care of their increased costs.
If that was the case, why did we put it before the taxpayers in the first place?
We did for the project, if they wanted, if they wanna change the approved project, if they have money in their maintenance building fund that was approved at town meeting for their building, I would think they'd be allowed to use that money.
Well, I think if we wanna change the cost and scope of the project, it should go back before the tax payers.
You don't need to change it, you're just adding the dimming possibilities and use of dimmers in the classrooms.
That's right, dimmers that weren't included in the first.
Correct.
Uh, war, that's just, you know, just like.
Yeah, but I said, if the school has it in their building maintenance or building fund for the current budget year, if they wanna use that money to pay for it, I don't see a problem with that, but that's, I'm not voting in this, you guys are.
That's a lot of extra money. How much, or is it just dimmers versus, you said there's some duty costs?
I, I don't wanna break down that.
Duty costs are one thing, when you change orders.
Change, but.
Change in the scope is a different thing.
Yeah. Had you been able to get in touch with Emily?
No, I haven't spoken with her about this because I wanted to know where you were at. Uh, another concern I have is with the town office building and we did enter into a contract to do work here as well. I'm concerned that we didn't think it through enough and that we'll be left with something that we're not satisfied with.
You mean this, this LED project?
Yeah, for the town office specifically.
Yeah, I think.
Well.
What, what?
Well, my concern is, is that we still, we, right now, we have people sitting in offices with the lights off because, because they're too bright. When David from revision came in last week, the week before, to do a walkthrough, he indicated that they will be replacing the same number of fixtures in our ceilings and that they will be brighter. So, and we don't have a dimmer option. So it either means that we're all gonna be exposed to too much light or we'll all be sitting in the dark. I think that if we could compel revision to wait a year on the town office, we could rethink the scope of work and maybe come up with a better solution for the town office.
Well, I.
This is very contrary to what we were originally told, the original walkthrough, that we would have options as to the brightness.
Yeah.
So it's, so.
Has that been contacted efficiency of any? If the.
Well, this is like the rebates, but the rebates have all changed. In June, they all, the programs shut down, they get a whole new set of programs, July one, which they have on the website.
I get seventy percent of all my lights for free. I just gotta put them up.
Yeah, I did.
And I gotta give my lights back to them and they give me seventy percent.
I did, it was a deal, what, yes?
Well, I'm wondering if, you know, I'm confident we'll be forward with the school. They seem to know what they want, they put a lot of thought into it and they're coming up with something that will work with them. If we could compel revision to wait a year on the town office, although we're under contract, and even to use that money towards the change order at school, I think that might be better off in the long run than having them install fixtures here that aren't going to meet our needs. I'm very concerned about it.
But isn't that the same deal, that we just changing the switches?
I don't know, maybe we can come up with a better.
Cause the switches has, has had the dimmer all, I don't know if anyone else.
The thing is like these fixtures are four-two, they can do a retrofit that puts it to three. So you're gonna reduce your draw, you know, how much you're using. One, LED uses a lot less than, than fluorescent and then you're going from four tube to three tube. And because the LEDs you can get are so much brighter, cause you, you do two things. One, the color and brightness you specify. So you could get away with three LED tubes versus these and still be as bright. Or you could go down a notch. or you could go down a notch and get what the staff is looking for, for reasonable lighting that's not burning out their eyeballs when they're looking at white paper on a, or a dress, or the screen, it's too much fluorescent on their screen.
I think I'm just concerned that we were given one price earlier, and then it went up to seventy-two, which is what we appropriated, and now...
It's gone up even more.
It's gone up another six thousand and change.
That hasn't surprised me a bit. The dim, we had this...
I'm not as cynical as you are.
But we had some of the, the couple of meetings I went to early on, I talked about dimmers. And it was, uh, it was actually on the committee, obviously, but he said they did the dimmer things, and it wasn't all that keen.
Well, there are different types of dimmers. These are, these are basic dimmer, they're just dims, it's not remote control.
I, I know where I work, they've been doing this, and I gotta tell you, there's been more accommodations due to this new lighting for employees.
Yes.
So I have some serious concerns.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Well...
You just pass out sunglasses, that's wrong, though.
Talk to you, Cam, on the way out.
I, I'm not feel wild about accepting the change order.
I don't wanna hold the school up, but I do, I have some concerns.
And the, the bid wasn't a two-part, it was one big...
It was one bid.
No, well, it was separate, the, the school was separate from the town office.
I would say, if you hold up the school, they may not let you wiggle on it.
Yeah. That's, I would rather see us put that extra money that was slated for the town office toward the school than to hold up the school, because they have a very specific timeframe that they need to work with it. And I'm confident that the project will get done at the school, so we might as well let it happen. But the town office, I have reservations about.
I'm, I'm thinking just about the, uh, the estimate for bid or whatever it was, and the warrant, and the vote. And the scope has been changed, the cost has been changed, it should go back before the voter again. It's my view.
Who put the bid out? I mean, how does it change sixteen thousand dollars?
Oh, they solicited...
Just six.
Yeah, but now they're asking for another six.
Six, but four, and then six after.
Yeah.
The first six was due to a lot of the tariff increase taxes. Yeah, but why wasn't this in on the bid back? Who, who missed all this, by putting this out? It was all gone over, it was all talked about, the school didn't mention dimmers, the dimmers weren't mentioned here, and then the school...
But if the school wants to fork over the rest of the money to do a change order on the dimmers, the town is still approving the original proposal, right? Or am I correct? Well, we're talking right now about changing the original proposal, and that's my objection.
Right.
Well, you keep the same proposal, just the change order, the school would take care of, right? The additional cost on the dimmers?
In theory, yes, but they're not budgeted, they're not budgeted for those funds, the school isn't. And school, in theory, can't spend any money that isn't budgeted.
But they do have a contingency fund.
They have maintenance funds.
Yeah.
They have building funds.
Yeah.
And it's gotta be more than six thousand dollars.
It is, but...
It is, but what if something else comes up down the road?
I recall, I recall discussion at town meeting and, and much of prior to, they're, they're running just a razor's edge of, you know, closeness, and I can't see them having this extra money kicking around. I think Peter brings up a good point. If, if the, if the school department's budget has eight thousand for electrical work for the year, and they spent six thousand for the dimmers, they only have two thousand left, you're beginning of the school's budget cycle, and something goes electrically, and it's three grand, they only got two grand to cover it. Not going into contingencies. Right, but it isn't, this is, we're two weeks in, we're two weeks into the new fiscal year. We got a lot of year left.
Well, the other consideration, you can, the board can do as they wish. Emily's concerned on the final walkthrough. With similar concern that Christine's having a bone, not be able to adjust the brightness. They have kids, students at the school who are affected by light. A lot of classrooms right now have got covers of all the lights. Half the lights are covered in certain classrooms, because certain kids are affected in behavior-wise, otherwise. Okay, I think we're not, this is what I'm gonna say. So I'm most concerned, the last walkthrough was, can we find a way to adjust that with dimmers? So it's up to you, that's as far as I'll go. I think the school has maintenance money to do that, they have building money to do that, but if the board says no, and there won't be dimmers on there, and you won't get the same effect that she's hunting for for those students, but that's...
But, why didn't they bring this up? I think, I guess the point is...
I don't know.
I know you don't know, but I guess the, the question is raised, they spent time, and they don't have students who have the, have these issues. Why didn't they bring up in the design phase for the project? They spent a fair amount of time, I mean...
Put it all the way they bid for, and change, if they want dimmer switches next year?
Probably, the thing, thing to do is to put the brakes on, put the brakes on, have a thorough study, investigation on what the town hall's needs are, as well as what's going on in over at the school, come up with a whole new specification, a whole new cost, and put that out to, to the voter. Yes?
Um, just, I would like to ask a question. I, I know there was an analysis done about how much money this conversion would save over time. What, what are the numbers ballpark on that?
Good one?
I, I don't remember, did it to you?
For the town office, was it paid back, did you pay for it about, little less than five years? And the payback for the school was about eight years? When they would pay for themselves, that this cost should be covered.
And Mike?
And while we sit here, CMP is having a hearing for rate hike for twenty percent?
Twenty percent?
Yeah.
For distribution, not the energy.
I take baby steps.
I, I understand, Peter, your concern about asking the town to vote for one thing, and now installing something different that's more expensive than what they out drops. And that's, that, that's, that's a noble concern of somebody in your seat, and I respect that. But there's also savings, somebody else can say, oh, you delayed a year, why don't you, you've robbed the town of these savings. Where do you balance that off? Well, we, the board of selectmen chose to put this before the voters. I, I'm not sure if we were required to specifically, or not, I think, I think it was the best idea.
It's a pretty big contract.
Pretty big, yeah.
Yeah.
It's big.
And it was a decision of the voters. And so I think any adjustments need to be decided by the voters. It's just as simple as that. Well, what have we signed? I mean, do we have a contract that's binding now?
We do, we are under contract.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to go out and do it again, not without litigation.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
I mean, you really need to go through, whether you do the change order or not's a second, is the second question.
I feel like the school's gonna happen anyway, we should probably go ahead and do it. If I can, or if we're able to negotiate about the town office and delay it, I think we'd be better off.
Well, having been in the business, all right? If we go back, we, we take, let the school go forward, and the principal does have a problem with, it's not staff, it's the students, and we're gonna get complaints from not only the parents of the students, but also, you know, get into the whole social services and everything else, you're not, you know, this gets in a whole gamut with the state regulations of dealing with children. So one way or another, we need to do the change order. We ask, and because this project, the school, this building is fairly small, they'll let us off the hook on the promise, we'll come back, let's redesign it and everything, so we'll come back and do it next year or something. I think we can get off the hook, 'cause this is not a big, this is always the throwing. 'Cause originally, it was the firehouse and the fire department figured out how to do, their building was very few fixtures, and it was easy to just do it themselves. It was just a tube replacement, other than a couple of fixtures. I mean, literally, like three fixtures they changed, and everything else is just tubes, it was a quick and easy. So I think, you know, in my opinion, that's the way, we got a contract. If not, we're gonna be spending six grand with town council to get out of the contract, to go and do it all over again, and maybe not change much in anything. So we might as well just do it and then figure out how to do the change order. And, you know, the school got the money, do it, but they may be stuck, they may have to go in their contingency if something happens electrically.
Right.
'Cause if they spend six out of eight, I don't know what it is. And something comes up three, they're gonna have to pull a thousand out of something else, but hopefully they got enough.
That would be Emily's call at that point, right? That would be Emily's call at that point.
Yeah, she's gonna have to figure, her and the school are out to figure out, right, you know, okay, we're short a thousand bucks to replace some panel.
Sure.
That shorted out needs to be replaced, but they'll get it out of something else in their line. But that takes care, then the school project's done, the town people are happy, Emily's gonna be able to deal with parents in a reasonable fashion, we're not gonna get into that whole circular mess. And I think they'll let us off, 'cause this building isn't that big. I mean, that was the discussions David and I had and the others, I didn't get to go through a lot of it, but the couple early on meetings, and it was just, this is small. The fire department was real small, we figured out how to do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Um, not to say we wanna do that with this building, but I think we can get off and then talk to them and do it later on, and express the staff's concern.
Mike?
Uh, yes, it sounds like to me, as expressed by Peter, it's either funded or it isn't funded. Sounds like an unfunded request to me. So you would treat it the way you treat all other unfunded requests. He said it wasn't, the, the request wasn't approved at the town meeting, because it's a change order. So it's an unfunded request. How do you treat unfunded requests? You put them on the budget for the next year. It's an unfunded request.
Or they'll do the change act.
Well, things happen, that there's ways to come up with funds.
Sometimes we can be penny wise and pound foolish and not...
Yeah, I mean, we've had other things, I mean, think of the discussion we had early in our meeting with the salt shed. We originally came, the engineer said it was gonna be a coordinate lawyer or whatever. Then as we got closer, was, and then by the time we actually did the bids, we had to rebid it and all, but that... But we did that without going back to town meeting. I mean, we've had, this is without going back to town, I mean, this is, I won't say peanuts, but compared to the full price of the project, we haven't had to do it. And I, I understand Peter's thought, you know, discussion, he's right, but, as you said, pound foolish, penny wise, whatever, I mean, we don't need to have... The problem is the school. And I know, we can get in, having been on a school board, we can spend a lot of money with attorneys and get parents going to the state and everything, go into the circular thing and burn up more than six grand just dealing with three kids who have issues with lighting. Easily.
I was gonna say the ADV too.
That's the problem.
Right.
There's gonna be a huge part in this, if you have those three kids.
We do, we know we do, we can't run from that in our home. Why, why we missed it, I don't know, it doesn't matter, we have to deal with it.
And we do have flexibility built in, you know, there's always, that's why we have reserve accounts. So we can come up with money when we need it.
So, should we accept the change order with a proviso that the school funds the difference? Or, and or see if revision would be willing to renegotiate the contract so that this, this building is put off till next year? Or take, or take the whole thing back to the special...
I believe that once the school catches wind of, they are going to have to fund the extra money, they'll go right into orbit like they do every other time that we don't pay for something for them.
And then they're making the decision.
Yeah, that's true.
And again, they made, they made the request for the change order.
Yeah, the school board meeting is until next month.
Yeah, they met last Wednesday, so it's gonna be...
Yeah, I thought it just already happened.
Needs to talk to revision and see, is there a deadline on this? If there's any wiggle room there.
They've sent me at least eight emails, asking me to sign the change order, so...
My concern is the inconsistencies, where when they did their first walkthrough, we were told that the lights, that it was no problem, that they could use different lights, and they were really taking their time to get to know the space. And now I hear from Christine that the lights are the lights, and they're probably going to be brighter. Then at our meeting, our joint meeting with the school board, they presented that it was better to do new fixtures than refits, and that we would have these low-profile lights installed, and then I've heard that that's not true either. So I'm just concerned with...
I think the fixtures will look different, they will be low-profile, but they're gonna go into the same exact spaces, so they'll be brighter. Like in my office, I only have one switch, I can't control how many lights I turn on. So they're gonna go into the same, the same...
The cost of the retrofits, the newer lights became less expensive than the retrofits. Without reason, the, the price went down, those fixtures.
It's a revisit, so...
So they're not wanting to retrofit that?
No, they, they, no, the new fixtures...
Because of the sheet of name, I'll give you an example, the building I just did.
Well, no, they, they did originally talk about that, I thought.
Yeah, I think we change, see, this is the thing with efficiency management, you change the rules. I just did a building, it was two by two foot square, propels. The, a new fixture...
The change order at the school...
Ended up being twenty-one dollars after the rebate.
Lower the original seventy-two.
To retrofit it, it would've been fifty dollars. So, what'll I do? I'm gonna buy all, I'm gonna buy fifty new ones, not retrofit them.
Just for clarification, the warrant article didn't specify exactly what work would be done at first.
Right, it wasn't a flat amount, it was a flat, it was just how much to spend.
Yeah.
But, but there was a...
We did provide information.
A bid upon which that information was...
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So we go with a motion that says that we will accept the change order if the school makes, a school budget will accept the difference? Otherwise, we will continue with the same bid, and we will at the same time authorize the town administrator to inquire as to putting off the retrofit of this building? Is that a second?
Well, that's her motion.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
We got a second.
Oh, so you made the motion?
Yeah.
I thought it, I got it.
We're not going to, Emily's on vacation and the school board doesn't meet until next month.
The other, the other time factor is, it's gonna take a week to do this, and there's a week in August that the school can accommodate, and maybe accommodate for revision.
So...
Meaning August is after they meet.
All right, so we're gonna go with that.
All right, to authorize Christine to talk to revision about putting off this building, and to authorize the change order if the school will supply the extra funding. Otherwise, the bid remains at seventy-two.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
I appreciate the reason you opposed.
Um, business item number nine, the town line update. The town line between West Bath and Bath, which has been unknown for a hundred years or more.
This is the King's Road?
Oh, it's a whole new bank.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to update, I did contact the city of Bath. I started at the top with the city manager, I haven't heard back from him. I did ask him whether or not I should be having this conversation with someone, some other public official in Bath. But I think we have a pretty good understanding now of what we need to do. But I think we have a pretty good understanding now of what we need to do. My memo to him was not threatening at all. I told him that we weren't interested in having counsel or, you know, taking legal action, that we just wanted to settle on a line and we weren't tied to where that line might be. We just wanted it documented and there forever. So, I will let you know as things progress.
How long are we going to give the city manager of Bath to respond?
Uh, probably until about after my lunch tomorrow.
Okay. Sounds fair.
Okay.
Did I ask you a, a, a question from a point of ignorance? Where is the town line unknown to be? What, what part of the water, Wing Farm?
That's part of the.
That's part of it.
That's, we've discovered that.
There's a missing marker.
There's a missing.
So, by the railroad trestle in North Bath?
Okay, thank you.
And due to liabilities.
Something is, is the bridge that the state removed. The middle of the bridge is state moved, that, that was the town line. So, it's now in the middle of the street, which is further than the river.
Quite a little way, yes.
For your change law.
Um.
Have a part in that?
We had spoken last meeting of a workshop following this meeting concerning committee structures. Um, I'm going to make an administrative decision that due to the lateness of the hour, we will attempt that for next meeting. Is there any other others?
I do have one other. Friday, John gave me the RFP for the apparatus, so we are ready to go out to bid for the fire truck. And I didn't know if he wanted to review that RFP or the specifications which are bound and in his office, if anybody would like to take a look at it.
What's the. Your.
Be great to me.
I think that's why we have high achievement commissioners, we can, those type of people. They know what we need, they don't know what they.
They need a new truck, that's, I'm just, I know.
Then I'll just tell them to go ahead and start advertising.
Well, we're gonna have a big ladder, I don't know.
I mean, that's what they, why they have the draw.
Six times.
Gotta have a big pump.
We want big pumps.
And something, something to. Something to drive the beavers from the overets, sort of beaver vacuum.
Okay, so, um, we will leave that one to the experts.
Okay. We have to start advertising tomorrow.
Yeah. Marvelous, that's a, that's a, something to celebrate.
Uh, wait till we get to.
Wait, that's not yet.
We're gonna wait.
Sorry, I'm gonna put a selfie.
So, you can wash it.
Okay, um, any other other?
I got one thing.
Oh, no.
I don't mean, I don't mean to beat, beat the hell out of it, but, uh, Wing Farm Zoo, have we looked into that any further?
No, we haven't.
Okay, cause that's, uh, there's possibly three more buildings going up in there soon. So, that's probably gonna wanna be, I'm not telling you guys what to do once, top of some of these lists, so you can figure that out in a hurry.
So, it's going like, uh, right at the bottom, she hasn't sorted out.
I had any of this.
Last time I spoke to them, which was about two weeks ago, they were, uh, under the impression that we have taken over everything in there and we own it. But we pay the fee to the, to the city of Bath. So, that just, that just needs to be clarified.
Okay. Um, any other other? Yes?
Uh, Peter's question about the effective rate of the number one choice, it is true because it's a summer. They pay halfway through and then that interest is applied to it in billables. So, the coupon rate is, I looked at the coupon rate, the effective rate of all here is true.
Excellent, thank you.
But we have to pay our back here.
Right, thank you.
Any other other? Okay, quick, before somebody thinks of something, motion. Second, second, all in favor?
So, we need a dollar or a hundred. They own, they own the sewage. They're charging the whole, for sewage, the whole, apparently, apparently it's a two thousand dollars.